How does this thing feel? The loud voice.
Today is Tuesday, February 8. 22:31 PM. Sheriff's, San Antonio Police County. The meeting will be held in person at the training room of the Rockport Service Center, 2751 State Highway 35 on Bypass, Rockport, Texas for social distancing guidelines and using the video conference application Zoom. Use action to be engaged in the 8th Street 19 by avoiding meetings and bringing people into the group set. Video conference capability will be utilized to allow individuals to address the county. Citizens of the public who participate in the public business. Public participation is valued and citizens wishing to express their views on any topic or agenda item electronically is submitted to citizen participation form. You may register to speak by going to the city of Rockport website. Or if attending the meeting in person, register before the meeting begins. Using the same form, citizens can also provide written comments to the city secretary by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. The mayor will read the comments and they will be summarized in the minutes of the meeting. I'd like to take a roll call. Ward one.
Here.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Mayor here. I know the presence of the form probably will be important. So we join Council members.
Welcome to the City of Rockport, United States of America. And to the Republic where it exists. One nation under God, indivisible, with a breathing heart and a soul.
Stand.
Thank you. And I want all the members here.
Wait, sir. All right, I don't know what this is. Get to my spot. Where's the case certified? Mayor Patrick Goose. Somebody's not available.
Got some news coming over. I've got to meet people just tomorrow.
Technical difficulty here.
And just so y'all are aware, council, we've got some new speakers we're trying out in there, microphones. So we're tweaking with things, so please bear with us as we try to improve some of the sound system.
For the Texas Municipal League recognizes elected officials participating in the Texas Municipal League Institute program who earn the appropriate number of continuing education of CEUs each calendar year. TMO presents the following awards. Certificate of Recognition, which is 42 CEUs. Certificate of Achievement, 54 CEUs. Certificate of Outstanding Accomplishment, which is 72 CEUs. And then Certified Municipal Official, 72 CEUs, including two hours of open government training, one hour of training on the Open Meetings Act, and one hour in the Public Information Act. So one of our own, Marios, has achieved Certified Municipal Official status for the seventh consecutive year, and he's also one of 46 in Texas this year as well. So I'm going to present this.
I wonder if there's probably like 10,000 elected officials that have achieved. Is there anything else that you'd like to?
No. He always tells me, he should have had it for nine years, but that's when he first met me, saw what the bad influence and decided to just do it.
The first couple of years, the first couple of years I was not submitting the forms only because I didn't know how. But they taught us that training, so it's one of those things that I think it's important to continue education in. Always encourage council members, we have a budget board. It's good to be a bigger program in the state as things change. I know on the state level with all of the different things that are coming about in the legislature, it's important to keep up. This helps us keep up on what the cities can't do. Thank you. Item number four. Citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes and take a few hours from persons who have signed a speakers card located on the table in the back of the training room in the service center and deliver to the city secretary before the meeting begins. Or read the comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting on any subject matter that is not an agenda item. Will be read by the mayor and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to advise the council to register using citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. According to the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted by the chair. While civil public rights is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace, as prohibited by law, shall be caused to the chair to terminate defenders tight as possible. Three forms. First form is from Patrick Kane at 1123 G Seale Street, Rockport, and he wishes, I'm sorry, this is on agenda. Citizens to be heard.
Citizens to be heard is item number four. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said four, sorry.
Chriskey Reddick. Ms. Reddick, this form is dated January 31st, so I'm assuming this is for tonight.
I filled it out today and sent it in, maybe not, February 8.
It's probably a form you used last time.
I don't know, I just logged in. So it doesn't have other items on there I'm going to speak on?
Citizens to be heard, item 11134.
It's for tonight. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Recently, I was asked why citizens seem to be concerned, and so I just want to bring that up publicly, put it on the record so that there's not any confusion, and I want to offer some solutions. Talked with these privately with Marias, as I always do. On August 31st, 2020, this city council put forward the tax notes after tossing out a valid citizen petition on certificates of obligation, denying the citizens of Rockport their right to vote. The right to vote in America is foundational to who we are. It is what makes us unique from any other nation in this world. And that one action led to a series of mistrust in this city of Rockport. And I talked to you this fall, to this council, and I said I was looking forward to some changes, and that that was just the beginning, but you had made some hard decisions, and I appreciated that in your personnel. And now is the time for some of those additional changes that need to be made to regain this trust of citizens in the beginning. And I presented these to the city manager, I've talked with my city council representative about it, it's no secret, so I'm going to put it on the record tonight. I'd like to see more financial transparency. All financial documents need to be on the website. I'd like to see that information presented to council, large legal documents that are in your package, 170 pages, given a week, two weeks in advance. Give you all some time to review them. We're getting overwhelmed, and you're overwhelmed, and you're working hard. I'd like to see that your videos of your Zoom meetings go on YouTube, so that, just like the county, so that everyone in the city of Rockport can participate, whether they're here or not. There are other options for you, the dock to zero base budget. Live within your budget. You told us that City Hall would be affordable, and now we're asking to refinance City Hall. I have a lot of questions about that, and I'm going to speak on the other agenda items and talk with you about it. Do you have any idea how much debt you have? 20, 45 million right now. Do you have any idea the cost of City Hall? Do you have any idea the cost of refinancing? So I'm going to talk about that on the other agenda items. Be more transparent with us. Let's build trust and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. All right, everything else is on the agenda items. Moving on to the second. Officer, if you agree with the consent agreement by the city council, it will be enacted by one motion. Will be no second discussion of these items unless a council member's sole request. In which event, the addendum is ruled, removing the consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence, on hold. Counsel, does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Mayor, propose a second, Mr. Brundtred. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Thank you.
Record agenda. Item number 11. Deliberate an act on request to close Main Street, Austin Water Street, on the second Fridays through the second Sundays of every month, starting March 2020 to 6:00 PM on Friday to 6:00 PM on Sundays for a street market. And I've got a card on item number 11 from the list I'm not getting. They shouldn't be tied. And I'd make a statement ahead of time. Have us discuss this and then join in if we have any questions.
Either way, I have some questions that I have gone through that maybe I could answer, or if you would rather ask me your questions, I could give you the answers that way, whatever is easier.
Does anyone have anything to put on this one?
I have a list of questions that I've been sent by other merchants in the district that they would like to have answered. And so if it's okay, I will go ahead and leave this discussion. First question being, is this setting a precedent of a private business closing a public street for personal profit? And I'm going to answer that one. It's, well, I feel it doesn't. I feel that it's just, it supports the merchant's second Saturday marketing initiative to get people to come down to this district. Next question is parking. Lots of two blocks of parking. Where are those vendors going to park? And is setup and take down monitored? If not, it will be chaos. Could you please answer that, Ms. Baker?
I can answer that. Currently, I have permission for private off-street parking for annual vendors. There is another avenue that I have not explored, waiting on approval or disapproval from the city council. So at the least, I have off-street private parking for the vendors.
Thank you. Well, the market be fully supervised when open, what about security day and night?
So supervised during the day, well, since my wife and I's business resides right there on the corner, I will be outside and handling the day-to-day operations with the vendors getting set up. At the evening when it's closed, I have talked to the sheriff's department, city police, I'm not sure where to go, but yes, I've seen that officers will contract, you know, yes.
Hello. I'll get your business part.
That's all I need. So from 6 o'clock on Saturday night until 6 o'clock Sunday morning, I will have security there, and then I will be up and take care of it from there.
Thank you. Who is reviewing vendors to avoid controversial and/or illegal wares?
So my wife and I will be doing all the jury. It's very clear, anybody that applies to our vendor, that it's a jury to show, and we have lists. We know what our business is, we know what the downtown represents. We're looking to bring in vendors that are artisans, handmade, handcrafted, not store-bought, not resell. If I could say, an upscale market to coincide with what we have downtown.
Okay, thank you. Do you have experience requesting the closure? Do you have experience with markets, fairs, or large crowds?
So years ago, with the family, we did a large craft fair back when crafts were huge. Over 400 vendors, multiple barns on the premises. It was integral in setting up, managing, taking care of vendors. Yes, it's been a few years ago, but I deal with the public all the time.
I'm going to go ahead and answer this one. Have they talked to neighboring businesses? You already have a written permission from Rowdy Maui's across the street on Main.
Correct.
To go ahead and use that, and that's all that's required in order to have that street closed?
Correct.
Crowd control and security? I think we already talked about that, and then it says here there are two empty areas of letting Main Street on that block. Work with owners to use these. Street and parking open.
Both of those lots, the one behind Maui, Rowdy Maui, and the one behind me is actually owned by the business beside me and owns that lot, and no, we will not be using either one of those lots. Neither one of those we're interested in letting park there. Rowdy Maui doesn't own it, and the store next door with her business needs that off-street parking for her own business.
All right, thank you. Just a couple more. One person here is worried about noise pollution, but from what I understand, from what you and I have talked about, is that this is just going to be just vendors, no generators, no live music, no hype music, no, just vendors.
That's correct, with one little caveat, there is a gentleman that does acoustic guitar, and I will send him up on the patio in the corner on Sunday. It's not going to be a full band, it'll be very subdued, very quiet. You won't be able to hear it a block away.
Thank you. And then materials don't indicate the type and quality of product that will be, whether those products be handmade, but you already answered that. No end date is noted. I don't even know what, if there, it says, will a trial period of six months or a year help illuminate unforeseen impacts?
You know, I don't foresee stopping this, you know. Our whole goal is, you know, certainly to help promote downtown, and if it's a success, I can't imagine why, you know, it's something that we wouldn't continue to do.
Okay, and as you and I, you guys and I have talked before, and we've talked with the district merchants, we're all behind this. Let's bring as much people and stuff down to the Austin Street corridor as we can to get people to go into the stores and be engaged in downtown.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor, that's it for my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, you said you have some off-street parking, where is that located at?
It's actually going to be behind the businesses, so if you know Water Street, behind the businesses on South Austin, on Water Street, and that private property back behind there.
Okay, and then I was just looking at your, it says you're going to have 60 booths, 10x10s.
Correct.
That seems quite excessive for that area. Just, I work really a lot with Business Expo on the fairgrounds, and we had 100 businesses there, and we condensed it down to 50, and that was still very crowded for that same size. That does concern me a little bit, how many you plan to have on that little, on that street, I don't know.
So if, my map may not be real clear, I've got 10-foot booths, two foot between the booths. If you look, if you're standing in Austin looking toward Water Street, so along the two curbs, that's 15 booths along each curb, 12-foot walkway, 11-foot walkway between booth and booth, same thing, 10-foot, two-foot, 10-foot, that's another 15. Four foot behind that is the next booth, 10-foot, two-foot all down. So four rows of 15.
And I completely understand, I just think it's a lot of businesses, a lot of booths to have in that small area. I don't think it's going to work as well as you think for that many businesses. It does concern me, would be that condensed on that small street. Just kind of my thought process on that.
Absolutely, and you know, this isn't certainly set in stone, what we do today, you know, the overall scheme of it, if it gets to that point where, yes, we've got so many people and so many booths in there that it looks like a concert and you can't walk, then yes, we need to talk about thinning down the crowd and making it enjoyable. That's something that, you know, we'll revisit and certainly be open to any inquiry, you know, and please feel free to come down and, you know, look at the, look at the market yourself.
Motion to approve the request to close south side of Austin Street from East Contra Street to North Street. I'm sorry. Close Main Street, Madison Street, Washington, on second Fridays through second Sundays every month, starting March 22, 6:00 PM on Fridays through 6:00 PM on Sundays for a market, for a street market.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Well, then I'd like to offer, before we vote, is.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about how, how do you plan on closing the street? About what that is really close to the street?
So I talked to Theresa about that, and she said that the city department would have a hard time getting, you know, barriers down and taken away. So immediately, we went to look, of course, where we all go, to Amazon. Orange cones, tape, blocks, we will buy that material and block off the streets if that's what we need.
Homes are more, more something for, you know, for a temporary thing, like we could use a crash site or something, put out for 20 minutes, 30 minutes, pick it back up. And merely for the safety of people that might be walking in the area, so it would be our preference, and of course, I give this as advice to the decision makers, that it would be barricades, a structure that says more permanency, that this is, you know, this is, this area is closed for vehicle traffic for the foreseeable future, certainly an entire weekend. And that's, that's what we do as a governmental body, if we're going to close a road, that's why we would put out barricades versus just cones. So that would be something I would suggest from my perspective for safety-wise.
I, I hear where you're saying, and the soft horses that I see the city use, you know, if I were to build something like that, is that what you're?
Exactly, and I feel confident those are available. I don't know about Amazon, but they're certainly available, we can say purchase them somewhere, but they've got to be out on the open market. And again, a look at this, I would, I would offer you would probably prefer that as well, because cones don't really give that great of a signal, because typically, when we put out cones, it's coupled with a uniformed officer directing traffic as well. You're probably not going to have that, and so something more like a standing barricade is a safer thing, and it would be, it would be my preference, it would be my suggestion to council, from our perspective. And then I think there was another question about.
Sanitary conditions and trash pickup, both during and after, how is that, excuse me, how's that going?
So I have not called the porta potty or the trash people yet, I mean, they're on my agenda, and again, I have not called them because of waiting for approval on here. That's something that they do and deal with, I can't imagine that I'll have any problem with a contract to do that. That's, that was my goal, I wasn't trying to put it on the good, call it, put them up.
Does, whenever they have the market days, or whatever the market, whatever downtown on the weekends, every other, what is it?
Second Saturday.
Second Saturday, I mean, they don't have any type of things for that, am I correct? So I don't see why we would want to do that, I mean, that'd be great, but my other, my question that I didn't get to ask was, you're not planning on doing any type of alcohol or anything like that, because then if that's the case, then a whole nother issue.
So we're, we're really, we're, we're trying to draw families, we're trying to draw, you know, artistic quality to work, a family event, not.
I like the issue, I mean, I like the whole concept, I mean, my, when I first got in the council, I really wanted Austin Street to be shut down, period, and have a block, it was kind of like a block party type thing, where, I lived in Hampton, Virginia, that's what they did during the summer, you know, they would shut it down and they would have come in, it wasn't like a party, but they just called it Hampton Block Party. But I like the concept, but I'm sure everyone here could lead you in the right direction, you just got to ask the right questions, and don't try to do everything by yourself, you know, ask the right, don't ask the right people, that's how you're going to get in trouble.
That's, on my to-do, I have the whole to-do list of who to call.
Mr. Baker, is it okay if we, if we need your approval, to come back and meet with staff and get their recommendations?
Absolutely, absolutely, I'd love to open those channels and those doors and work, and make this what we envisioned and what you guys envisioned with this.
We try to be successful, I don't want to set anything up for failure.
Yeah, no, absolutely, just.
Now, what you need of the local stores, be able to get a booth, if they wanted to get a booth there?
Absolutely, again, I mean, we're a jury, man, but I don't have a, I can't see a store in town that I would.
Mayor, would you consider, sorry, would you consider putting a, an end date for three months, six months, to what we can take a look?
Kind of like a pilot program?
One of the things I was going to say before, I would like to, because I think one of the other things that we need to do is, is the council was, take a look at especially permit ordinance, because we don't have anything in place, this is, it looks like it's going to come up one more, and I'm in favor of this, but I think we need to have, it'd be easier for all of us, for y'all, because you'd have something already established. We did speak with our attorney today about that, they wanted to look at drafts from other places, that will address all of these things, the things we haven't thought of. My only other thing is, we may want to consider a timing period like the city manager's talking about, you know, until we get this special just for this, and I don't want to make it too short, I would think that we could consider, you know, it's up to y'all, it's consensus of the council, but if we decide to prove this through to the end of summer, it'll give us enough time to get it in order someplace. end of summer, will it give us enough time to get it in order someplace?
Minnesota would agree.
I would agree with that.
And with the thought that we, you know, would make it, I can't say permanent, because we don't know what's gonna happen to that street or the development behind there, along, along those harbor paths, that might affect things, but.
I certainly understand the time limit and the questions of that. A couple realities I think I see on my side, okay, so I just started advertising, getting vendors for March, okay? It's gonna take, you know, it's, I'm not sure, it's gonna take maybe six months to get the word out, vendors, the quality vendors that we're looking for, that we already have, their scheduled shows that they go to, so you know, I'm gonna be trying to pull those over, so. I hear what you're saying about the permit, so in six months, you're hoping you'll have something in place and we can roll over, but you're also saying to me, no guarantee.
Well, you don't know what's gonna happen with the harbor front developments, if the developer comes in there and we need that street for safety issues to move, safety moving up and down. I'm not saying that's, that's the point right now.
Well, we've all heard that's a possibility, and in those situations, I certainly, I get that, I mean.
I feel pretty confident nothing's gonna happen, we now need it in the summer in the way of park.
Right, but we also, I mean, something's gotta, if something does come up where the city needs to use that street, and it happens to fall on the weekend that you're doing it, then I don't know how that's gonna.
Yeah, I think we, we all want it to be successful, and it sounds like it's gonna be, going to be, but if we put an end to it, and I'm not saying we put an end to the event, but we put an end date, it gives us time to evaluate the, the product, and to evaluate resources that may have to be spent to make it successful, and it will give us time to develop a permanent application, an ordinance that goes with events and that sort of thing, so that we help you identify what you need, and helps us identify where we can help you have a successful event. So it's just a process that we need to go through to protect the citizens out there, make sure, and I saw in your application and your answers, that you will have liability insurance to protect the citizens, that's fantastic. Right now, we don't have that requirement, but we need to, so I appreciate you stepping up and doing that. So it just gives us an opportunity to work with you, and we look forward to sitting down with you, just, again, gives us an opportunity to make sure that we're evaluating all the resources that, if any, get put towards this, and we want it to be successful. So, again, I'm an open book, you just call me, and I'll be available.
So I guess my question is real quick, don't put an end date on there and say this event happens, and I know there's a lot of open questions that are not fulfilled yet, what it's gonna happen, and it's not working out, or there's issues, I mean, how do we work around that if we don't have an end date?
Well, right now, the way you're giving this permission is, it's just open-ended, and.
I would see, I would see, yeah, a date out there, which you can review, but again. Thank you.
Yeah, my, my question again, I heard you say that you're gonna, gonna make arrangements for, for to call our solid waste company, and have the, maybe a dumpster dropped off, so you can place material into it, but during the event, are you gonna be able to control litter, are you gonna have someone maybe walk in the grounds like you do at festivals, and, because this, well, it happens downtown, calls the Parks Department, and we have other street festivals, our guys are down there every day of the week, picking up spillage, over spillage that's created, so my concern is stuff just around the area, stuff that might blow, might wind up in the harbor, proximated to the water, and things like that, I'm kind of concerned about that, I'm just kind of throwing that out there, so when you do come back with us, talk to us.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a list of volunteers that will help me, and again, police the grounds, keep on, and part of my contract is, you know, we all know, but the vendors will also be responsible for policing and keeping up with their traffic, but yes, I'll have a list of volunteers, and they'll be helping me on that during the day.
Mayor, I believe your city attorney is on Zoom, and may have a comment as well. Ms. Anthony, are you on?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I, in light of a lot of the questions regarding some of these requirements, as well as the provisions provided in the email, I wanted to make sure I was understanding that this approval, to me, it sounded like, is an approval to post to the event, it's not necessarily a guaranteed amount of time right now, it could be reviewed at any meeting of the city council in the future, but being able to have an agreement in place with the city to allow the city to enforce all of the provisions that have been identified in the email would be our recommendation, if that's something council's willing to consider.
So you're suggesting an amendment, motion, put a time limit on, until we can get everything in place?
And I think to have them get with staff.
Yeah, that's.
And then they set the provisions, like, what she's saying is, we're given a permission to have the event, but they need to get with staff, and they're gonna come with a checklist, does, all this stuff needs to be done prior to you having your event, and if it's not filled, then you're not gonna have your event, that's how I'm getting, am I correct?
And I would like to amend my original motion, approving item eleven, starting March twenty-twenty-two, with an end date of August twenty-twenty-two, the end of August twenty-twenty-two, and the recommendation that you need to see staff, and we're gonna follow our needs, taken care of.
I second the amendment.
Nice question. So if I just wanna be on the same time there, so by August twenty-two, I'll already know that I can have the August show, will revisit in July, or?
I think what we need is that if you get everything done, you can have a March show.
Right.
Right, but by August, we just have to put a, review the requirements for the city, put an ordinance in place with a special permit, and this will have a permit application, and then from there, we could look at this, if you're, if you're interested, this is something you may not, you may not wanna do with the winter months, I don't know.
I'm just trying to get an end date for me, I can have the August show.
Yes.
Have the August show, end of August twenty-twenty-two, to August thirty-first.
And you would have another council meeting in August, right, so that you can send it.
That would be running for last show. So what I believe I heard the, your city attorney say, our city attorney say is, this isn't a forever approval, if revoked at any meeting if issues arise.
Right.
Okay, the goal is to let you operate this successful event downtown, at least through August, and we hope longer, okay, but that just gives us some time, gives you a possible end date, and gives us time to work with you and other possible vendors out there to help us develop an ordinance that the vendors can live with, that protects the citizens.
And I think as far as meeting, sorry, you need to, police, parks, and public works, Mike, we need to work, those three departments, okay? And we'll, we'll get you contact information for that.
And keep your councilperson informed.
Your councilperson probably. We have a motion in a second.
Do we have a clarifying question, please? What are we voting on specifically?
The amended motion to close Main Street, lost underwater, on second Fridays through second Sundays of every month, starting March twenty-twenty-two, and ending, from six P.M. on Fridays through six P.M. mornings on Sundays, ending on the end of August twenty-twenty-two, and we're, Baker should give it to city staff, and follow their recommendations.
Thank you. I just wanna know for sure what we were voting on. I lost track, everyone.
Okay, that's what you said, I did, okay. Anything else? We'll call, word one.
Hi.
Word two.
Hi.
Word three.
Hi.
Word four.
Hi.
Mayor, thank you. Word two.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item twelve, your presentation on economic development incentives, I've got a couple votes on Steve and Christie.
Now, they're gonna.
You're gonna manage this slide.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Christie Rutledge, fourteen-eleven day of July. And just after citizens to be heard on this item, we are getting here, kind of a presentation from the Economic Development Corporation, some private corporation of investors, their goal was to invest in Rockport and to join forces with the government, with the City of Rockport and the Chamber of Commerce. I'm struggling with the idea of the economic development policies, because they were written by private investors, yet they will incentivize private businesses with our tax money. We are having a serious budget problem, we cannot afford to lose any tax dollars, so I want you to consider that. I want you to consider Mayor Rios' words when he went to the state legislature this summer, and he talked about the residents of Rockport not being able to afford the Tweedle rate hike, and he said that economic development would make it hard in our region for some people who want to live here to be able to afford to do so, it would force them out, those are my thoughts, and it's very concerning to me that what you're talking about are policies from private investors who are gonna make it hard for us to be able to afford to live here, okay? It even says so in the tax increment finance policy here, that, you know, it's gonna make housing affordability issues worse, there is a clause in here that talks about that, that is very concerning to me. Last night, I had a chance to talk to a school board member who mentioned that it is very difficult, she has not recovered in her home from Harvey, nor have I, I'm only about sixty percent recovering. It's hard for the school district to recruit teachers, because they cannot afford to live here now, so why are we going to adopt policies that we need, we know a known outcome will be, that housing affordability issues will be worse for the working class? Are we gonna trade off small apartments in downtown for families who would like to live in single-family homes but no longer can afford to? I really want you to consider that. And City Council, you don't have the same advantage that county commissioners have, you don't have an attorney on staff, I'd like for you to require meaningful workshops, you're gonna get a small presentation, there's a lot of legal documents here, and thirty days in a part, so that there is some dialogue with citizens, and some transparency back and forth, where we can understand these policies, and you have a chance to understand them, because I don't believe that there's any way, in the few minutes that are gonna be presented by the private investors, that any of us will understand what is in these policies that are gonna fundamentally change our community for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, okay? So it's up to you to require the kind of transparency and the kind of citizen input as far as thirty days apart on meetings and a meaningful workshop, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, and what a good information you've been using, but I said it, the legislative question.
Are you happy to share the video?
Mayor, council members, my name is John Jackson, resident of Rockport, pre-World Olympic Drive. I'm a lifelong resident, from my great-grandparents to my grandkids, we've been here for seven continuous generations. Following Hurricane Harvey, I was asked to assist with the recovery effort, particularly representing Aransas County on the Coast of Bend Disaster Recovery Group Board, and so in doing, I attended dozens and dozens of focus groups, meetings, sessions, task forces, as many of you did. Our board helped raise millions of dollars, almost all of which were spent repairing, rebuilding, replacing homes for the most needy and impacted citizens in this county. And in that effort, it became clear, after all of those meetings, that we needed a committee, a community with more diversified and sustainable economy. Not long after that, we formed the Aransas County Partnership Economic Development Corporation, and a key part of our community initiative is developing a plan to prioritize targeted areas to focus on bringing in more commercial tax base, not having the benefit of economic development sales tax as seven hundred and twenty other Texas cities have had, led us to form into LGC and then the EDC. This structure gives citizens a voice, as well as a private sector opportunity, to help fund a comprehensive program, and saves local taxpayers and provides a team approach to managing and directing development and growth. The policies and guidelines that Mr. Meek will present to you tonight will put you in the driver's seat, not the other way around. The EDC is simply your service provider for marketing and recruitment, and will distribute the guidelines that you approve. You decide whether a proposal will be worthy or not, so I urge you to direct your staff to review the documents, make the changes, whatever is needed, let's work together for a more resilient economy and a more promising future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor Michael Meek, the EDC, and we are pulling up the slides now, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening, we will call and need assistance all of twenty-twenty-one, another step forward for your recovery and sustainability, and I think you'll see. I wanna minimize it.
Maybe just do next slide?
You should be able to do the middle button? That's what I'm doing. Okay, it's not, okay. All right, there we go, okay. Firstly, Mayor and Council, I'd like to give a little overview of what is economic development, there's a lot of misinformation around that, in the country, and it's pretty common, but what we're talking about here is an intentional practice, intentional practice of improving your community's economic well-being and quality of life. It takes a broad range of activities to retain, create, and attract jobs, and to foster the growth of a resilient, commercial tax base and inclusive community, and finally, it's, it's a collaborative effort, involving business, government, and a myriad of community stakeholders. Next slide. So how's it work? It's basically a process by which new dollars are infused, sorry, okay?
Oh, yeah, just asked to make it larger.
Okay, fine. Okay, it's a process by which new dollars are infused into a local economy by primary employers, and what I mean by primary employers, those are employers that create a product or service, they, they make stuff or sell stuff, not here, but outside your trade area, and those dollars from outside your trade area come back as new money into your economy, that's a, that's a primary definition of economic development. Next slide. This is a, a hard slide to read, and I'll, I'll just say that there's a lot of models out there that a community can follow on how to carry this out. After the, after Harvey, the idea was to have a local government corporation set up, whereby the cabinet and the City of Rockport, the Town of Fulton, and the Navigation District would provide funds to the LGC so they individually, not setting up their own economic development organizations, and speak with a common voice, and then the, the local government corporation would work with a economic development corporation, like an EDC, at the time, this slide was, wasn't even an EDC forum, usually a CCs formation, to carry out those policies, and basically to be, be your recruiting and marketing firms, similar to what the Chamber does for you guys in Jersey. Next slide. So it's formed in twenty nineteen. So it's formed in 2019. All those four entities signed on to the LGC or local government corporation because they wanted a first economy. They wanted to attract quality businesses. They want a business-friendly environment. They want an expanded commercial tax base. They wanted a clearinghouse for existing employers to have their needs met. And they wanted to increase workforce housing. Next slide. So basically, the authority and rules contained in the Texas Local Government Code provides various tools in various chapters, like you'll see tonight, Chapter 320, Chapter 380, 311, 372, that provide you as a city government with the opportunity to provide some of these wealth-creating activities. Next slide. Again, why have these guidelines? Well, you have goals of lower unemployment. You want to strengthen local business. You want to increase commercial tax revenues. And you want to attract quality jobs. Next slide. Economic development is a public purpose in the state of Texas. There are several essential conditions that a business requires before they locate in a particular area. They don't start off looking for incentives. An area has to have a skilled workforce. And you've made a lot of strides when you're coming workforce development center. They look, employees today move to where they want to live, and then they look for a job. So you've gotta have a high-quality of life to attract those employees first. And you've gotta have infrastructure that they need for their business. However, companies must remain cognizant of their overall cost, and the market will accept no less. Next slide. So incentives can and often play a role in securing a retention, expansion, or retention. It's instructive to know that approximately 95% of all Texas cities use one or more of these incentive policies. In fact, the incentive policies that I have drafted were not invented by me. They were taken from cities in Texas, written by their city attorneys. Without meaningful programs, communities will be handicapped in their wealth-creation efforts. And of course, the challenge here is assuring that your programs and policies are structured and reflective of your priorities and done in a manner designed to maximize your return on investment of any public resources that are needed. Next slide. So three of these chapters in the Local Government Code, 320, 380, and 311, specifically provide tax relief to residential taxpayers because you're increasing the commercial tax base. And here, that's a real issue. And then CAD has 87% of their total tax base residential and only 13% commercial. The state ratio, by the way, is 40/60 split. So that's, it's exasperated when you have homestead exemptions and over 65 tax freezes. So local governments find it very difficult, and this is including schools, counties, and cities, of providing increasing services to citizens with a tax base that is dwindling. Next slide. So we have targeted business sectors and strategies. They're compatible and sustainable for the city. It's gonna stop some of what we call leakage of dollars that you are earning here that leave to go to Corpus or elsewhere. And these policies and procedures, Mr. Jackson mentioned, they place governmental entities in a proactive, controlled position, not a reactive position. It provides a process to evaluate requests. And again, it provides maximum return on investment to you. Now let's get into some of these in probably a 30,000-foot view. Next slide. Chapter 312 agreements. These are probably the most common. They've been around probably the longest in Texas. These are known as tax abatements commonly. I call them temporary tax phases because they normally run less than 10 years' time. The only permanent tax freezes out there are your over 65 tax freezes. When these go away, in fact, the recent policies that the county passed, they have a five-to-eight-year window, and then they go away. The city has no obligation under these drafted policies to provide these to anyone. Eligible entities much match, they need to match what you're looking for in targeted business sectors. Right now, your maximum temporary abatement suggested is 70%, not 100. And 100% is used in surrounding counties for subprojects. What the county recently passed doesn't go over, I believe, 56%. That's something we need to look at. And it also contains bi-local and higher-level criteria. Next slide. Again, it's used to stimulate, encourage, and develop business location and commercial activity and provides you added tax base. You see the ratios, 87/13 is a little need here. Next slide. Chapter 311, this is becoming more and more popular around the state, tax increment financing. What we have recommended here is in downtown, commercial activity only, not for housing, not in residential areas at all. The way it works is that the growth in the property taxes by a development, you take that increment associated with that new development, it's captured, and that pays off bonds that are levied to pay for public improvements. And so it encourages economic development within a defined geographic area like your downtown. Next slide. Also, again, it primarily funds public infrastructure. It's not, it's not entered directly to the benefit of the companies. It allows for the repayment of the cost of public improvements like drainage with future tax revenues. A lot of these tax increment financing programs are what we call backloaded, not frontloaded. That means the developer pays for your public improvements. And then if his development, his or her development is successful, part of the public improvements that they paid for is reimbursed by new property taxes and new sales taxes over a period of time. Next slide. Another one, Chapter 372, it's interesting, public improvement districts, known as PIDs. These are interesting because it's in a defined area as well, usually a commercial area like a downtown. And again, you look at some community goals in that area. And it's primarily used for the environment, environmental assets. Next slide. What's issued about this, it permits the financing of qualified public improvements. However, the bonds are paid entirely by the property owners within the area. So next slide. Usually, what we're recommending is you get 100% support property owners within the PID for that formation to occur. They're basically voting among themselves that they're gonna tax themselves above your city tax rate. And those extra dollars go toward needs in that area, like landscaping, trees, especially lighting, artwork, bike lanes, roads, trails, ADA accessibility, underground utilities, et cetera. Next slide. And also water, wastewater, drainage, streets, and public safety. They agree to additional levy. Those collected special assessments on property and the funds are dedicated to those improvements. The city's not on the hook. They are totally responsible for the bonds. Next slide. There's a three-to-one ratio on these things. And that basically means if there is, for example, a $15 million in new added value in the development, the PID bonds could not exceed $5 million. They have had low annual debt service requirements, and those bonds mature at a maximum of 30 years. Next slide. One of the more popular incentive policies in Texas now is known as Chapter 380 or tip policy. Excuse me, not a tip, but just a Chapter 380 policy. Again, for cities that want high-quality growth, and that is commercial growth, not population growth, improve quality of life for its citizens. And so they protect the city's fiscal ability here in Rockport to give out those services for the safety and comfort and enjoyment of Rockport residents. Next slide. These are due to projects that contribute, or we're suggesting anyway, is that they contribute to your public infrastructure. The city's, again, a no obligation to provide any incentives to any applicants. We're suggesting a taxable value of $10 million, this is similar to what the county passed. If in downtown Rockport, we lowered that threshold to $420,000 or they become a top 25 sales tax generator and they provide hourly wages at 10% above the metropolitan fiscal range. Next slide. In addition, it's gonna make a unique and unequal contribution to the development and redevelopment efforts here in the city of Rockport. Make a significant contribution to the city economic development priorities you have. And it will enhance your fiscal ability to provide high-quality services for your residents. There's an application process where forms are supplied by you, the city. Again, you're in the driver's seat. You are not reacting to an application that's turned in that they created. But you have the application, you have the forms, and you control the terms, timetables, security, et cetera. Next slide. It's a very flexible tool besides public infrastructure. You can use it for workforce training, reimbursing of sales tax, welfare fee waivers, land grants, facade improvements, et cetera. So that's why cities like these, because they're much more flexible to use and gives you a lot of leeway there. Next slide. So the LGC, when they had, they recommended that the city of Rockport adopt policies on 212, 380, 311, and 372. Next slide. And that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions. Hopefully, what these do is change the community forever. And we'll change it in a good way to make it more sustainable. While the city to have more tax bases, we would like to call that good change.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. Free. Mr. Meek, what is the Aransas County trade area that we're supposed to be putting trade outside of?
That's usually defined as the union market. For instance, you have nearly half of your workforce seen outside of Aransas County. Most of the 60-year-olds that are still working and not retired. If they're driving outside, that's about all the way to Austin or San Antonio region. That's outside your trade area. If you're driving inside Portland, that's probably your trade area.
So there's no defined trade area? It's probably maybe?
Well, there's a lot of studies out there that have different mile radiuses, 12-mile to 35 to a 60, whatever you want to define as your trade area.
So what does a trade area have to do with people driving to work?
Well, it's where they spend their money.
Oh, got it, okay. I do not remember which slide it was, but something was mentioned about a BRE.
I'm sorry, Business Retention and Expansion. And our first work plan goal the next four years is this. So that's why we ask them and ask them what they're gonna carve.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, what is a top 25 sales tax generator, and how is that determined?
Well, then your city gets in the controller, your top sales taxpayers. And so.
Yes, that's by entity, not by group?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I've got a question. I'm always, when I first saw the numbers on the ratio of residential versus non-residential per company taxpayers, that seems to be an area that we really would address. The only viable way to do that is to look at commercial, like you mentioned before, commercial tax dollars. Any idea what timeframe or how long it would take us to start eating away at that?
Mayor, we, as I mentioned, Councilman Jackson, we put together a work plan this year, 2025. And we feel like if we accomplish those five major goals, which has the action plans in it, we can bring that down to maybe 79/21 by the end of 2025. That doesn't sound like a lot, but that's a good hit.
I know I visit with a lot of other elected officials from all over the state that have programs in a easy place. And they're always poking at us about how they're able to maintain their tax rate and they're also able to add so much more in city services because of increased revenue from sales tax, from adware taxes, from permits, from fees, and things like that. And a lot of these communities aren't much, well, some of them's bigger than ours, than us, but about the same size. And again, their goal is to keep the quality of life without impact. Again, we're not gonna be a smokestack city.
No, and that's not on our targeted list. And one thing there I'd like to say about economic development, sometimes you do all these things just to stay even because your economy does not stay the same. That leakage is coming out of the bottom of the bucket. If you think of your economy as a bucket of water, it's got pinholes in the bottom. So there's leakage happening every day. If you're not pouring new things to the top, nothing stays the same.
One thing I see that's appears to be beneficial to us right now is that with all the activity going around to the south of us, this side of the bridge, with Portland English Side, Gregory Taff, and then even in St. Louis, we have a lot of those folks that choose to live, who are buying homes, bringing kids to school, and asking sales tax based things. But again, all that, you know, I'm getting fussed at by elected officials in those communities because of people that choose to live here for this quality of life. And the people that are moving here want to keep, maintain moving.
Sure, sure. Rooftops will help you use more retailers that you don't have today. So that's a positive. But a game changer over time is gonna be that those companies that make something. They can be lean. We've got a golf manufacturer here now that's very quiet. We've got about 30 employees making golf wages, paying really good wages. And that's, to me, that's the sweet spot. We could do more of that. And when broadband happens, you're gonna see more of that in local work happen because people want to be here instead of connected to work.
Mr. Meek, I follow the Commissioners' Court presentations and the back and forth and that through the presentations, the policies were changed. Or, you know, is there rough drafts, I guess? There was a lot of back and forth, you coming back to the county with some of the changes that were asked. And I would like to maybe kind of see that with us as well, have our staff and attorneys review our stuff and then even possibly a workshop if the mayor so chooses to present some of that stuff. And we can ask him his questions and maybe not, not in a council meeting, but at a workshop.
I think that's a great idea, Councilman Brummer. In fact, what the county did, they took the 381, which is like your 380, and the 312, and their legal staff combined it in one policy. So I would encourage them, even though these drafts from me are from other cities and not written by private investors. I said earlier to your city manager today that I really like your legal staff to look at these. And we're all for, if you want to do a total rewrite, a total reword, which you think is needed. The importance is that we have a policy. We don't have any ownership of authorship here at all.
I think the back and forth fight was successful with the county. I don't want our policies, if they're so adopted, to be so different from the county's that there can be issues bringing people in, you know, if ours is so much different from the county's. If we could get as close to each other, if we could, in order, you know.
Yeah, that could be positive. I think as long as you share the targeted business sectors, you certainly have different ways to go about bringing them in. For instance, they don't have the 372, 311. So that's some really key tools that you can use that they don't have, the option to use as easily. So the community I worked in for 30 years, the county had different tax abatement percentages. But I could tell you over time, it's been 15 years since we've done a pure tax abatement agreement with the 380 because it was easier for the city to do.
I agree. I would like a workshop, because especially in the documents underneath your presentation, there's a lot of things that I would love to go over, have that back and forth, so...
Where do we go from here? The way I envisioned it was, hey, this is the presentation. Let's just lay out for about 30 days, let the community see it, live with it, and then come back to you with the workshop, probably early March, and then second meeting in March, if you guys approve of changes, we bring it back to you for possible action.
Can we make it, can we make it easily accessible on our city website, the paperwork that we received last week, not just the presentation, but also that paperwork, so people can know exactly where to get it and read it? I think that'd be really helpful for them, instead of having to dig through our city council meetings and try to find...
Yeah, I think if the legal administrative staff want to see a rewrite or would prefer a combined policy like the county did, that could be done fairly easily on those, on the 312 and 380, that could be done in probably a day or two.
I think it's good that the community digests this for a period of time, and then we come back to you with the workshop.
I have one more question. I've heard reference now three or four times to five priorities and thirty strategies. Something I can get those, so I can see what...
Sure. Oh, then. Well, it's on our website, January 27. And I will send a specific version of just that to the city manager in the morning.
Thank you.
Much obliged.
Thank you, Mr. Meek.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will go between the resolution approving and adopting investment policy and trade to continue my work pace. First, the reference.
So just real quick, I don't really understand your investment policy, other than it's here. I hope it's a result of the audit that's going on right now. Maybe it's a result of the unspent bond money that was discovered recently. The comment that I want to make is, whatever you do regarding your investments, I'd like to be able to have a place where citizens can see the, and track the bonds, the debt that we have, and how they're being spent. It's easily accessible online. It's tied back to these investments, something that can be traceable. I've seen in your monthly reports where there's a specific line item for investment on a legal fund, or maybe a particular bond. I don't remember exactly, you know, I read a lot of your documents. So I'd like to see individual line items in your investment policy, traceable back to your bonds. Thank you.
Same.
I'll do that quick. Katie?
Sorry, I was making notes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. It's that annual review that we come to you once a year. We bring to you our annual investment cost policy and the attachment that provides the brokers and agencies, which we use to process to make investments with. Our investments are minimal, but we do have a significant amount of time invested in those. We ladder our securities as much as possible, and we diversify into multiple pools as well, as provided by our policy. The Public Funds Investment Act pretty much does it make what the policy needs to say, and does it make how we are able to do our investing. So what we're doing tonight, I'm not asking you to take action, I'm actually asking you to review and ask any questions that you may have, and make any recommendations, anything.
As we've discussed, Katie, you discussed the basic gist of this, is that in accordance with the public act that you, I can't remember the name of it now, is that we're diversified, we're conservative, and we follow all rules and regulations heretofore with?
That's correct. Not only do we follow the law, but we are certified in the law as well. Our charter requires that, as well as the state law. The PFA, the National Intermediation Office, Public Funds Investment Act, we are required to, every two years, obtain 10 hours of CPEs within that, as well as maintaining them additional six hours. As a certified government finance officer, I put about 32 hours a year into CPEs, and actually about half of it has to do with investments, bonds, debt, and financials, putting together how I stand upon the basics of the county and our digital gas laws that come out of every consideration. So this is something that myself and the staff spend a significant amount of time making sure that we follow law. So if there's no more questions, I'll be back next council meeting on the 22nd and ask for you to accept or adopt the resolution.
There's no action, so...
That's correct. So the disconnect between, um, three, two, three council meetings, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can we take a quick five-minute break?
Council. Okay. We will, 7:45. The time is 7:51. Rockport, the Council's back in session. Item 14, we're going to act on a resolution promoting the plan of finance, adopted by, approved by Resolution Number 2021, January 11, 2022. I've got three people that want to be in the conference.
Can you read the comments? Are there comments that are written? Can you read them first, pardon? I would appreciate that very much.
What comments were given?
Do you have some written-in comments?
But you're up first. We'll go by order.
I'll just try to finish my coffee.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. Kristi Rutledge, 1411 Lakeview Drive. Item number 14 is to approve or amend the plan of finance, which was kind of rubber stamped by City Council when it was presented. And I want to say that you all were not presented with complete information on that night. You didn't really understand that a certificate of obligation, notice of intent, was going to be issued just a few days later, and it was. So we have a concern now. We had some unspent bond money that was presented. I'd like to ask you all to rescind the notice of intent tonight from the January 11 certificates of obligation. I would like you to rescind refinancing old debt that was included in that plan of finance, because you didn't have complete information. What is the cost to refinance the City Hall tax notes? Includes your interest, your fees. You've got some of that information, but you don't have your interest. You don't understand exactly what the full cost is to the taxpayer. What is the impact of the INS rate if you borrow a smaller amount just for the City Hall overages, cost overages versus refinancing everything before considering new debt? What are your near-term and long-term goals? You have to put your capital improvement projects in the formula, otherwise you end up having to refund your tax notes, et cetera, over and over and over again. I did a lot of research this weekend, and I'm finding that there's possibility of some refunding of old bonds back from 1996 that are still on the books. So what is the original term of those bonds? How many times have they been refinanced? We have a lot of unanswered questions here. You do not have enough information to approve any new debt that is not absolutely necessary. You do not have a full plan of what your capital improvements are. We have to leave room for our capital improvements, and we cannot just be setting up tax notes because we want to avoid the voters. This is a bad precedent. It's already happened too many times. Let your citizens vote on all the debt that is proposed to City Council. Do not borrow anything that is not absolutely necessary, because you don't understand. All of the information hasn't been given to you. Require specificity, instead of this vagueness from your financial advisor, from your city manager. Get all of the information. It's up to you, City Council, to require that, to ask the hard questions, just like they did during the tax note debate on City Hall. And it took a long time to get the information, but it was too late. Tax notes were approved. We were told they were affordable. Obviously, they were not affordable for City Hall, because here we are, less than 18 months later, and we have to refinance them, and we have no idea how much that is going to cost us. So get the information. I think your City Hall is up to over $22 million right now. Thank you.
Next speaker is Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street. He's a non-speaker, but he wants his comments read on item 14. I'm requesting this be read in the, why are we seeing the same request today that we saw in January 11 for 3.5 million certificates, certificates of obligation, and 8.1 million attached? Given the city manager revealed the city staff on approximately 4.5 million prior to the 25th workshop. The city heard that January 11, the city staff had no clue on the magnitude of available funds. This should be a pause that causes you to slow down to ensure due diligence, and now people taking on more debt. It is also clear the city's only borrowing of $11.6 million, as it can do so without raising the interest to the sinking portion of the tax rate. It is similar to a person maxing out their credit card every month, and it isn't a smart way to manage our taxpayer dollars. The council needs to send staff back to the drawing board. One, borrow what you can across the City Hall without raising the high, unnecessary refinancing the company on its assets. If you don't, you can borrow, it's sufficient to cover the added costs for construction. Scale the project back to stay within available funds. Two, defer all other debt until a clear long-term plan has been developed, then bring your debt needs to the voters in the form of general obligation bonds. Next individual wants to speak. He's on Zoom. It's Andrew Kane. Mr. Kane, you're not here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Andrew Kane, 2106 Lakeview Drive. Tonight, I hope you realize the council, tonight I hope the council realizes they've been given an incomplete status of our need for debt. Several years ago, we were told by our financial advisor, aka bond salesman, we need to issue 3.5 million in debt, BSEO. Then immediately you found 4.5 million laying around for a decade-plus, and you heard the interest. Tonight, you were here, we still need that 3.5 million. This doesn't pass the test of conservative, responsible government. If you needed 8 million a few weeks ago and found 4.5 million, then maybe you need 3.5 million. I hope my math is correct. I know it is clearer than what your financial advisor provides us. So knowing you will be responsible for signing off on the debt you put upon the taxpayers, I hope one of you makes a motion fast to rescind the intent to issue that 3.5 million CO. Let's get each council person on record on that motion. Also today, you were asked to refund the taxpayer unapproved tax notes of 14.5 million. We were told we could afford to a 16.5 million GO. Do you know the interest rate and cost of this new debt instrument? The excuse we were given less than a year and a half ago, when we rushed to issue tax notes, was we can't wait for an election and approval by the voters, because interest rates are going to...
I'm requesting this be read in the, uh... Why are we seeing the same request today that we saw in January eleventh for 3.5 million certificates, certificates of obligation? Eight point one million, I think. The city manager revealed the city staff on approximately 4.5 million prior to the Fox January twenty-fifth workshop. The city of January eleventh, the city staff had no clue on the magnitude of available funds. This should be a pause that causes you to slow down to ensure due diligence and down people taking on more debt. It is also clear the city's only borrowing of eleven point six million dollars as it can do so without raising the interest to the sinking portion of the tax rate. It is similar to a person maxing out their credit card every month, and it isn't a smart way to manage our taxpayer dollars. The council needs to send staff back to the drawing board. One, borrow what you can across the City Hall without raising the INS and then refinancing the company on the tax notes. If you can borrow, is it sufficient to cover the added costs for construction? Scale the project back to stay within available funds. Two, defer all other debt until a clear long-term plan has been developed. Then bring your debt needs to the voters in the form of general obligation bonds. Next individual wants to speak. He's on Zoom. It's Andrew Kane. Mr. Kane, you're not here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Andrew Kane, 2106 Lakeview Drive. Tonight, I hope you realize the council... Tonight, I hope the council realizes they've been given an incomplete status of our need for debt. Several years ago, we were told by our financial advisor, AKA bond salesman, we need to issue 3.5 million in debt, BSEO. Then immediately, you found 4.5 million laying around for a decade plus and incurred the interest. Tonight, you were here. We still need that 3.5 million. This doesn't pass the test of conservative, responsible government. If you needed eight million a few weeks ago and found 4.5 million, then maybe you'd need 3.5 million. I hope my math is correct. I know it is clearer than what your financial advisor provides us. So knowing you will be responsible for signing off on the debt you put upon the taxpayers, I hope one of you makes a motion fast to rescind the intent to issue that 3.5 million CO. Let's get each councilperson on record on that motion. Also today, you were asked to refund the taxpayer unapproved tax notes of 14.5 million. We were told we could afford to a 16.5 million GO. Do you know the interest rate and cost of this new debt instrument? The excuse we were given less than a year and a half ago when we rushed to issue tax notes was, "We can't wait for an election and approval by the voters because interest rates are going up fast, so we have to do this now." We were told this back in December of 2020. So what interest rate is this refunding bond at? It isn't listed in the agenda packet. We have a ten-year tax note at 3%, and you're being asked to approve a refunding bond at an unknown interest rate. What does it cost to do so? You don't know, do you? Would you refinance your house without knowing the cost to do so? And at what interest rate, especially considering we are at a favorable 3% now for ten years? I know you would not do so because you are smarter than signing off on a loan without the details, interest rate, and total cost to do so. We also want to issue another 8.1 billion in a seven-year term tax note. It seems we can afford the short-term ten-year already tax note. They want to refund now that we just passed for City Hall. So why would we issue more down the same path for the same reason in a shorter term, and at what interest rate? This will cost another few hundred thousand of dollars to refund next year. Who wins with all these refinancing packages? The bond salesman telling you that? You can afford it? The citizens lose. Don't mess around. Please make a motion fast and make it to undo the intent to issue the CO for the 3.5 million. If you don't, I promise you, we will petition it again, and I promise you, we will be successful doing it again while making you seem irresponsible again, being stewards of taxpayer money. Right now, many citizens are asking me and others about these topics, especially the found 4.5 million, and you're still asking for the 3.5 million anyways. Do you realize you are increasing the debt that taxpayers tonight by 25% after we seem to have doubled the debt in the last two years? Where is our fiscal conservative Republican values? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On January eleventh, council unanimously but tentatively approved the proposed finance plan. And that plan at the time included 8.1 million in tax notes, included 3.5 million in possible COs, and also included at the time, general obligation bond refunding of the, to refinance the Series 2012 GO refunding bonds and to refinance the 2020 tax notes. Council asked staff to bring it back to you guys in a workshop, which we did, provide you more information. So tonight, we are here seeking direction from council and the directions we'd like to go. Would you like to continue with the plan as is, or would you like to amend it? I'd be happy to answer. Any questions? And Mr. Henderson is here as well.
I personally would like to amend it without the 3.5. I think we can wait on that. I don't think there's any purpose of it since we have that 4.5. So I don't know how to make that happen, but I personally would like to not have the 3.5 on the CO. I'm going to start off with that.
You can make that more of a motion, or you can discuss further.
I'm going to make a motion.
Rescind the 3.5. I'm sorry.
I want to do... Go ahead. I make a motion to rescind the intent to issue the 3.5 CO.
I guess I'd seek clarification. The plan with the 8.1 million in tax notes and the general obligation bond refunding, but rescind the notice of intent to issue the 3.5 in COs.
Not speaking for the council, but I guess rescind the 3.5 and then continue to discuss the remainder.
That's what I'd like to do.
Do you want to discuss everything before we come up with one? Mr. Henderson, I've got... Thank you for coming.
Always a pleasure, sir.
I know we met earlier this week talking to, maybe just kind of brief the council on what call we have with S and P on...
We did have a rating call of staff and reporters yesterday to have them review the bond rating status of the city of Rockport in anticipation of a public sale. We are anticipating a response back from the rating agencies next Monday, approximately one week before we might send out, based on City Council action tonight, securities offering documents to facilitate whatever... I think it was a very positive meeting. They positively reacted to how wonderful the tax base of the city has rebounded since Hurricane Harvey. The sales tax receipts have rebounded since Hurricane Harvey. Much to my personal delight, hotel occupancy has been... So a lot of positive things since the hurricane. We are anticipating absolutely renewal of the existing very high rating in the city of Rockport.
I just wanted to reinforce the fact that I agree with you. I think we were looked on very favorably by the rating agency. They didn't indicate any problem with our existing debt, current debt, and future debt. I feel like the way things are going...
They commented, "We've got very modest debt as compared to the taxable assessed valuation." Utility system and I, in response to Mr. Jackson, I explained probably in more detail than she wanted to the way that the bonds issued are secured by utility systems and what is being managed and all here in Rockport. For the benefit of the community, I will tell you that, you know, most communities the size of Rockport have about 4,000 utility connections based on its population. We've got 9,300 in this community, which really shows you how many second homes we have and what the abundant economic power that this is as compared to other cities of this population.
Bob, or have a discussion on... I heard that we're refunding, from the citizens that spoke, we're asking to refund the tax notes because we can't afford it, the existing payments. And I think that's inaccurate.
That is inaccurate. Again, as I explained to Mr. Jackson, right? The maximum tax rate for a home charter city like Rockport, it takes $2.50 for $100 in price valuation, of which $1 can be used for debt service. Right now, you've got a total tax rate, I don't have the number in front of me, about 32 cents, about 18.3. That is for debt, and the other 22 cents and some change, 23 cents and some change is for maintenance operations. So you're at a tax rate now that is only now 50% of what state law would allow it to be. Now, I don't want to overstate that because there's virtually no cities in the state of Texas that got tax rates of $2.50. Very, very few that even approach $1 or go over $1. But at 30 cents, you are at a tax rate that is very low for a community the size. You have very modest debt. The debt-to-AB ratio is 1.19%. Whereas 3.5% would be considered a very viable number in terms of debt. To answer your question more correctly, the purpose of discussing the 2020 when we did the tax notes over time of putting in that two-year call is to give you the flexibility to extend the debt and meet your other capital needs without a tax rate increase. We told the citizens that in 2020, and that's exactly what we're doing here. So it's not a matter of inability to afford paying off your debt at the existing tax rate. It's a matter of extending the debt so that the asset life and liability more closely match and you can meet your future capital needs within that INS tax rate frame or parameter. One of the things that we discussed with some of the individual meetings I had this week was what happens to your INS tax rate in the event that you don't refund yourself? And the answer is, to do both the 8.1 and 3.5 CO, you'd be talking about a 6.4 increase in taxes. If it's just to do, if you dropped off, the 3.5 tax rate impact would be 5.09 cents to 8.1 million. Then for the purpose of dedication, if you only did 5.4, you're still talking about a 2.75% tax rate increase. Now, one of the things that we've heard commented on, and is an important thing to understand, is what is the interest rate going to be on these, this refinance? We don't know that until we actually sell the debt. It's kind of like locking in the interest rates on a home mortgage. Until you lock it in, you don't know what it is. I will tell you, much to Katie's chagrin as well as my own, when we were here on December the 30th and we talked about potentially refunding that 2012, the 10-year MMV municipal market daily rate was 1.03%. With everything that's happened, the day is 1.48%. It's gone up 45 basis points, almost half a percent. The 20-year MMV was at 1.30 in December the 30th. Today, it's at 1.75, so it likewise has gone up 45 basis points. At Katie's, excuse me, Katie's request, we reviewed a worst-case scenario on refunding the debt. And we had talked in our previous plan of finance, or the original plan of finance, of a final 15-year maturity. In some of the discussions that we had, we were talking about, again, matching up useful life of projects and debt. We talked about what happens, you know, the original certificate of obligation that was proposed in 2020 had a 20-year final maturity. What happens if we were extending this refunding 18 years instead of 15 years? That way, we would have, going back to 2020, a total financing period of 20 years. In other words, that would give us a final maturity the year 2040 versus the year 2037, which showed in December. Assuming that worst-case scenario going out to 2040, based on rates that Brownsville got just this morning, so current market rates, the refunding interest rate would be 2.88%, what we call true interest cost, which is based on the weighted average of those bonds over the life of the transaction. Now, I'm not going to... We've budged it a little bit to be conservative. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that it's going to be 2.88. That's what it would be if you did it today. You've got the same interest rates that Celia Brownsville got, but it's a pretty good indication. We are talking about financing coming back on February 22nd. That's two weeks from today. The last five weeks, interest rates have gone up 45 basis points. So I can't predict. If I did that, I'd be talking to you via Zoom from my yacht in the Caribbean if I could predict interest rates that well. But we think it's a reasonable rate to presume. So... Any other questions?
Mr. Gordon. I was emailed from a constituent this week. And in our long-term debt policy, it says, "In any budget year, the City Council may, by resolution authorized, on borrowed land, in anticipation of collection, natural tax, say here, whether levied or to be levied." And it says, "Notes may be issued for periods not exceeding one year and must be retired by the end of the budget year in which they were issued." So, and that's in our long-term debt policy, the city's long-term debt policy. So are our tax notes to be retired at the end of each?
No, no, they're not. And I'll tell you, we have to be very careful about vernacular. Under state constitution, anything that's got less than 13 months of final maturity is euphemistically called a note and has to do with, again, the calculation of the INS tax rate. If you do a bank note that is not what we call constitutionally authorized, in other words, there's not specific statutory authority on the constitution, you have to have a final maturity of 13 months or less, and that's really what that's referring to. The tax note statutes under which this $8.1 million for the issues very definitively places a maximum maturity of seven years. We did the real 2020 on 10 years because of the emergency nature of the governor's declaration because of Hurricane Harvey. The statutes very clearly limit this to seven years, and you would...
I guess another thing, going through the prior, prior councils. But it seems like some of our refunding bonds, we're going back to 1996, refunding some bonds in 1996 in our...
The original issue of 1996.
The original issue.
Yes, sir.
In our principal, we've only paid, we had to pay a black sum principal.
You've paid a substantial amount of principal. If I might address that further. Historically, the city of Rockport, as well as most communities in the state of Texas, issues debt with either 15- or 20-year final maturities. The 1996 debt was issued with a final maturity of 20 years to mature in 2026. Those bonds were refunded in 2012. And in 2012, and you and I talked about this earlier, 2012's final maturity is now the same 2026 that the 1996 equivalent. So it was not lengthened. It was not extended. It was refunded strictly for interest rate savings and savings to taxpayers in the month. Every financing that the city of Rockport has done, and I've been working with the city as its financial advisor, which dates back to 1985. We financed the old City Hall over there on Market Street. No refinancing of the city of Rockport has ever extended the debt one day. It's always been done strictly for economic savings, to take advantage of lower interest rates and to lower the cost to taxpayers. The restructuring of this 2020 tax note will represent the first time that any maturity has ever extended in the city since I've been working with the city. And it's done, again, in conjunction with what was described to the citizens at the time, providing the flexibility to refinance the debt so that the original $47 million capital improvement budget that was discussed in a public workshop, February of 2020, could be addressed within the tax rate parameter of 18 point... Well, actually, it started off at 18.7 cents. It's since it's been lowered to 18.43 cents. The only reason we're doing it now is so you don't have to raise taxes in order to meet some of these other capital improvement needs in the city. And given the fact that you've got a useful life in this City Hall of 70 years... My saying is what the contractors and the project managers and architects say. I don't do that stuff. We're talking about, you know, refinancing this debt, maximum maturity of 20 years versus anticipated useful life of that facility of 70. So still a very modest rate.
The, I'm sorry, the, with the basis points going up 45, 45 points recently, it's getting closer and closer to that refunding, the 2012 refunding is probably going to fall off the...
The 2012 refunding is gone. I checked with my staff. They're not going to be able to do it. Well, and I said all along, I said it in December, said it in January. If there's no economic benefit to refinancing it, we're not going to do it. Basic days interest rates, there's no economic advantage to it.
Thank you.
Any else?
Hold a question.
Question. Did you get the motion?
Did you agree with the motion? And then it wasn't an official second, but Brad commented, so that acts as a second to the motion.
I would like to talk about the 8.1 a little bit, you know, what we discussed one-on-one. We have City Hall 5.3. I'm just talking about the tax note. So Platform Three for the City Hall, we have Secondary Dispatch at 8.34, and then VNE Vehicles and Equipment at 1.9.
Yes, sir.
And I believe, Katie, we have 600 and some odd right now in VNE at this time, and then...
We have funded just over $600,000 to be transferred into the VNE fund this fiscal year from the operating funds.
Can that be, I know we kind of talked about it a little bit. For the 1.9, it had been, next year, we're set for 600. 1.2 at the end of the year, our budget would be?
So what it'll allow us to do is, if we are able to get forward with the 1.9, it will allow us to essentially jumpstart our multi-year Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund that we have not been able to do, due to several factors, you know, dating back to essentially 2017. And so we have multiple pieces of equipment and trucks that are out of service due to wear and tear, or they are reaching or far exceeding the kind of life. If we are not able to fully fund it, what we'll end up doing is what we would be drawing down anything we have in fund balance, which would prevent us from having essentially an emergency fund for our vehicles and equipment, and we would not have the ability to replace any large equipment if something was to go down. Examples are trucks in the fleet are about $300,000, a dump truck, which, you know, if something could happen to those, they're around $100,000. Backer trucks are $300,000. Backer trucks are $300,000. So we have some really large, big-ticket items out there that we may have to be replaced and that may not make it until we have sufficient funds built up.
And the, that enters the VNE, thank you. The dispatch, I know this has been, a secondary dispatch has been talked about for some time, some years, going back a while. Why is the city incurring that entire cost, or is the county going to incur any of this cost as well? We share dispatch now, so could the secondary dispatch be a shared expense? Has that been approached by the county?
Right now, unless the chief can add information to this, I believe the city's covering this cost.
I'm aware of, there's no input from the county, and of course, if it were utilized, certainly for any extended amount of time, if we had catastrophic failure in our current location, this backup dispatch would do exactly what that one does, which is dispatch for city, for county, for state, for both troopers and gang wardens, as well as animal control, which is county, and for EMS, fire, and all that. So it is all-inclusive, all of the public service agencies. And so, yeah, it would be a shared, be a shared item. So that is a very relevant point. You know, now for, for, I don't, I don't know what the county's plans for redundancy is. I don't believe they have any redundancy themselves. Now, we don't, and I don't think they do either, but I don't feel that that has been discussed with them for this.
I'm okay with redundancy. I just, I don't feel that we should bear the entire cost of redundancy, if we will. I mean, it is going to be a shared, more than likely, if something happens to the public ticket center, then obviously we're going to be dispatching for fire, police, fire, SO, state, EMS. So, and I, and I don't 100% love using tax notes to build something. So if we can pull that one or somehow come back to dispatch for the 800, and if we do have some participation with the county at some point in time, I just, I feel like we're going to pay the whole cost when we don't need to.
We have the same thing going on with the swimming pool.
I understand.
Yeah, Katie, if we are assistant here, we don't want to have to turn our, we're out of business. Again, it's a consensus, a council's decision, but it's a lot of money, but for the health, safety, welfare of the community, I hate school repairs. Mayor, may I? One thing that we talked about, council member, in our January 11th meeting, when we had Mr. Spurgeon, the law attorney, is the latitude with which the use of proceeds as language is written into the, into the $8.1 million notice to cover City Hall, dispatch, vehicles and equipment, potential streets and drainage. So it's written pretty broadly. We know that part of the money that was allocated for City Hall is for potential cities, and we've talked about value engineering and hopefully being able to save some money there. It would really apply to the same thing with the dispatch money. It's $835,000, I think, if you were able to, I would certainly encourage you to contact the county and see if you can't get some participation in that. Assume they participate at 50%, and the money made the county, you know, pulling the rock at me because I, I don't, I don't vote on the county commissioner's court even more than I get one here. But if you could get $430,000 out of that, that would be great. That would free up the money for some of these other purposes. One of the things that has been a personal pet peeve of mine, Katie kind of addressed when she talked about catching up with the Vehicles and Equipment Fund. I've had a lot of city communities, and I've been doing this for many, many years, got about 40-something city clients, about 20 county clients, it's really not effective. When you have a city or a county government call you up, wow, we need to finance $600,000 for a fire truck, or we need to finance $400,000 for streets for some minor piece of equipment. The interest rates involved, cost issues involved, doing those small transactions really bites into you. We also know that we're going to have a very useful, short useful life in those types of projects. In the event that you pull this $835,000 aside next year, that you need, and you're going to have to figure out, where's that money going to come from? You going to pull it from fund balances, or are you going to pull it from the VNE budget, which means you're in, have a hole on VNE? Believe it or not, even though I make my money helping governments issue debt, I don't, it's not good for anybody to come in and start doing these small types of transactions. I would encourage, particularly since the 70-year note is, the $8.1 million is structured over 70 years, and we've already put some effort, nothing's set in stone yet, some effort into making sure that structure pays off your equipment and your dispatch and short useful life things within five years, as we've been previously directed to on December the 30th. I would encourage you to leave it in there. Half of that number is only $400,000. That money can be rededicated for equipment, vehicles and equipment, it can be rededicated for streets and drainage, it can, together with any value, money safe and value engineered from the City Hall, it could be dedicated towards other things and help you avoid having to come back to the capital markets for dribs and drabs, small amounts of money. The last thing I would say is, we all know that the whole tax note thing, you know, draws the attention of some people in the community that have different perspectives. The alternative for financing these types of projects, short useful life, personal property, is doing vendor leases, things that have to get paid out of your MNO taxes as opposed to things that get paid out of your INSS taxes. And that's not a cost-effective way either, because it's not because of subject to annual corporation on the MNO side, paying a higher interest rate, you've got restrictions. This community has had a stellar reputation. It goes back to the mayor's comments about how well-received you are at Standard and Poor's. This community has a stellar reputation for long-term planning, thoughtfulness, and its approach to financial issues. I would, I would encourage you to, to think about what the unintended consequences are and start pointing out small items.
That also, or maybe for Mr. Morton, on the City Hall, we have the TIL, we have soft costs, professional services, and A and B and security. So, I guess in the City Hall, we're at 5.3. Can any of the soft cost professional service, or, probably not, soft cost and A and B and security, can, can those be funded at a later date? That's $2 million. I'm trying to figure out how to pay for the VNE and save us some taxes.
Well, you're going to have to do it at some point.
Eventually, yeah, but if we fund...
The money that you currently have in VNE and reduce this amount, but you will have to, you're using that money now, and the next time you have to purchase that because you are behind for whatever reasons, this city is behind on its VNE. The VNE is a, is an excellent model for replacing equipment, but you have to fund it on a regular basis. You have to put the life of the vehicle out there, and then you've got to pay it off. And the total worst part, you pay for their vehicles into this fund, fire, police, all go into this fund. At some point in the past, those payments into the VNE fund did not happen. So now we're, we have to replace these vehicles, provide services to the community. The only way to do it, purchase is, is to make this purchase, okay? So if you don't use, if you don't do it now, and you use the monies that we have, and you reduce that down, the next purchase you will have, you will, there will be no money for that. It's a hard decision.
I, I get the, the vehicles off, I'm fine with that, but what I'm trying to is, on the soft cost, we're going to go ahead and fund, well, 2022 tax notes, $1 million for, for, I guess, FFNE furniture fixture, electronics. And yet, we're not going to be moving it into the building for 18 months. I mean, realistically, if construction starts...
You're just delaying when you issue the debt.
We're going to have to do it at some point.
And then...
And the operation, and I can't guarantee the prices in 18 months either for that foot.
Something to also keep in mind when it comes to electronics is a lot of that stuff does have to be bought ahead of time and has to be manufactured before we can even install it. So that could be a six-to-nine-month lead time. So, in order to get parts in time, it's time to put them in the building, so.
It's true, something to keep in mind. We've been warned about that.
I've got an encoder card that costs almost $10,000, could be nine months to get the company.
I know it hurts, but we have to look a good picture down the road to the success of the community.
That shows all my questions.
Let's clarify the motion.
Well, I think we're discussing, you know, I'd have to amend my motion to go, because I made a motion to rescind the 3.5. So I'd like to do amendment to go ahead and go forward with 3.1, refunding of the tax notes, of the 2020 tax notes, and while rescinding the 3.5 and the COs, is what I'd like to motion on.
So there's, there's the motion.
I don't know if it's necessary, but I don't know if it needs to amend the motion to extend the final maturity of refunding.
Some of the micro police.
I'm sorry.
What I was asking is, when we, when council gave the approval of the finance plan, refunding was figured at 15 years.
Yes.
The tax notes to 15 years. And what, what we're saying now is, let's move it out to 18.
Up to 18.
Up to 18.
At that latitude. We, we, we find, as we discussed in our 1-on-1 meetings, if we, if we rescind the 3.5 million, we're going to want to restructure some of this debt in order to stay with the council's decision to do a constant INSS tax rate, so we want to make sure that tax rate remains at 18.43%. So we're going to maybe move some of that refunding up forward to accomplish that, but look at a 20-year final maturity as if the debt had been done in 2020.
Okay, sorry, motion is to move forward with the plan of finance, as we did, just kind of clarify, with the removal of the 3.5, is that correct?
I think you're saying you want to, yes, that's what was in my motion, but the 18 months, we need to...
And to rescind the 3.5, refunding from 15 up to 18.
Am I being amended?
Okay. Amendment. I make a motion to, oh my lord, I don't even remember right now, give me a second.
You're going to amend your original motion?
So I'm amending my original motion to extend it out 18 years instead of 15 years. That was, but I can't, I can't amend it, give me a second, I'm thinking.
No. You'll be second?
Second.
Second from this guy.
No, no.
I want you to do the next amendment.
Yes, amendment. Any further discussion? Word one.
Aye.
Word two. Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, name, motion protection.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 15, deliberate in act on a resolution on Rockport, Texas, working with the food construction company, and authorize the mayor to execute the construction contract in City Hall building located at 212 North Live Rock, Live Rock Street, Rockport, Texas. And I've got, Mr. Rutledge.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Chris Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive. I realize you, you all have to award this contract so you can move forward with a project that we didn't get to vote on, but you, you've got a big problem with this project, and the amount just keeps going up and up and up and up. And I don't think anyone really knows how much it's gone up. I've looked back at the records, and I see the original conceptual budget for this, and we're way over. We have no idea what the interest, the total cost of this refinancing that you just did for City Hall tax notes is. We have no idea what it is. We have from the debt repayment schedules what it would be to have paid off the 2020 tax notes, but we have no idea what the cost of City Hall is now. So I would like to see financial transparency on this. I would like to see a schedule as soon as possible, coming back, made available to the citizens, where we know exactly what our costs are, so we can start making measures to control them, because it is up to you. You all just approved kind of a slush fund for City Hall. We're buying things now that we don't need for 18 months, and we have no idea what the total cost is, we're talking about all of this inflation. How are we going to control this if there's not financial transparency? So I would like to see this city council and the city manager require a, an ongoing spreadsheet on the city website showing us what the costs are and updating those periodically, come back to us quarterly, and let us know what the cost of City Hall is. That's reasonable, that's within financial transparency, this is debt that we wanted to vote on, we disagreed with it because we knew during COVID shutdowns, many of us were out of work, and that we were suffering financial crises, that we would not be able to afford this luxury downtown City Hall. That's why people rushed out to sign that petition. The fact that it was thrown out, that's another issue I've talked about, but now that it is, you're saddling us with more debt, that it's, you're eating into my children's impairments and my ability to retire here, and I'm heavily invested in this community. And you all need to keep control of this cost, and you need to be, you need to have financial transparency all the way along this project. Put a spreadsheet on the website, find out how much this interest rate is, how much does it cost you to refinance these tax notes, because you have no idea. You have no idea what you just voted on, and you have no idea how much debt you've saddled your kids with and my kids with.
Thank you. So we've got the initial contract, we're talking about moving forward with the deal. We need to, moving, hard to look at that. Some contracts on that are not being discussed, are willing to commit to the current bid, but any further delay, you're looking at increased cost, 20 to 30% is what they're talking about right now. Right now, we've got fairly fixed costs.
So Mayor, Council, this item is, you're being asked to award the bid to TIL Construction Company in the amount of $16,380,000. And if you, in the resolution, go work the contract, you'll say, we're asking council to award the bid and authorize the mayor to execute the construction contract with TIL Construction for the base bid of $16,380,000, and to reduce that amount by at least $900,000 in value engineering. So it's kind of putting TIL on, on notice that we are expecting at least $900,000 in value engineering, so a reduction of that amount. We're going, we need council approval of the con, of the bid award.
We did have a meeting last week with Bradas and TIL on the telephone. We went through a schedule, identified areas that we could, could see significant reduction in costs. In order to lock that in or guarantee it and look for more, we need to approve the contract.
You guys need to award the bid and, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract with that caveat.
The nine hundred thousand dollar caveat?
We expect them to bring back a nine hundred thousand dollar, at least nine hundred thousand dollar reduction to the contract.
Does that need to be in the motion?
Yes, I mean, we're asking you to approve the resolution which has that language in there.
I make a motion that the city of Rockport, the award bid to Tiel Construction Company and authorize the mayor to execute the construction contract of the new City Hall building to be located at two one two North Level Street, Rockport, Texas.
Second. To the, a second, Mr. Brenner. Any further discussion? Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item sixteen, reports from council.
Nothing to report.
Nothing's more. One. Ward two.
Um, all the I've reported the, that last week or never, actually it was not past weekend, but the week of the last meeting, um, when I was. That was the week of our ANH, Aransas County ANH show. And I just want to say that our kids outstanding. Uh, there's gonna be a, a viewing of all the awards and stuff that they have at the, the county extension office. Uh, I believe it's, should be coming up soon. Uh, I, I will pass it on once I know that. I'll look at the date. Uh, and you can go by the extension office and you'll be able to see all the awards that the kids won. So it was a great deal. I mean, and it's not just, just, just remember, it's not just livestock. It's pictures, it's cooking, sewing, uh, it's a bunch of things, even welding. So, so Aransas County did outstanding.
Mr. Brenner?
Yes, I had a productive meeting last week with Richard Morton and the, and a couple of the country club residents, and one with the HOA and Rick Deloak and a couple other ones. Um, we had a good meeting about possible six drainage area in the country club. And they came up with some other ideas that they would prefer. And I think it's a good start. And I think we have some offers that come forward for the next month. Hopefully we can get started and some of those fixes underway. So very good meeting. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And the only thing, the only thing I wanted to report, we already discussed, and that was the, the most favorable results that we got from standard reports in our meeting with Mr. Henderson, Richard, and our, our bond council. That was, that was very encouraging to hear those words from people that are way smarter about numbers and things and finance than I am. So just want to assure everyone that we're in good shape. Standing session, city council holding standing session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one of the technical government code in accordance with the authority contained here. Item seventeen, section five five one oh seven one, consultations with attorney seeking advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer. And on a matter in which the duty of the environmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly the words of this chapter not just within the statute. Time is eight three. Standing session. I am in this, taking the reading of the executive session.
Microphones are on.
The time is 9:02. And city council is back in session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Time is still 9:02. And we're adjourned.